Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Welcome to the meeting. Next thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for our last meeting, December fifteenth.
I think it must be approved minutes from December fifteenth as written.
I'll second that.
And so. This is a motion by tenth and a second by Chris to approve the minutes of December fifteenth. All those in favor? Thank you. Uh next, the department reports, department head reports and. Chief, you want to go first?
Sure. Um, I'll start out by fire department responded to nine calls in the past two weeks. Five of those were crashes on the road. Pretty slick, a few storms that we've had. PD's probably had twice as many with slide offs and whatnot. I looked at our call volume for the year. We're at one hundred and thirty-six calls for two thousand twenty-one. And compared to last year's record year of one hundred ninety-four calls, we're down fifty-eight from last year, which is really nice. But I went back five years and. Uh was uh previous year, two thousand nineteen was one hundred and twenty-three calls, two thousand eighteen was one hundred and sixteen calls, and two thousand seventeen, one hundred and twenty-seven. So that gives us a five-year average of one hundred and thirty-nine calls per year. Bad news about heating systems. We just fixed our, our furnace at the center fire station. Well, now the north station, uh, we had that inspected and cleaned and they, they found a large crack in the heat exchanger. So that furnace is gonna need replacement. Um, waiting to get a quote from Augusta Fuel Company, but. That's gonna need to be replaced. I did have, uh, one of my firefighters go out with a gas meter. No, no issue as far as carbon monoxide or anything, so we feel it's safe to allow it to continue running. Uh, it's not an occupied building. Uh, you know, it's basically a garage and. Uh, long as we have zero read-in parts per million for carbon monoxide, I feel okay for the interim, so we can get it replaced. Uh, we're gonna have to bite the bullet on that one. Couldn't even tell you what a new part is, uh, oil-fired hot air furnace. You know, probably five grand, maybe a little more, but I'll, I'll get a quote and I'll present that to you guys uh coming weeks. The firefighters were very appreciative of the hazard pay. Uh, thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, everybody really, uh. Really enjoyed getting those, especially right before Christmas. I, uh, and delivered them to most everybody, so. Thanks again for that. Uh, we're not training last week, we're not training this week, just kind of taking the holiday break. Uh, so everybody's appreciative of that. And next month, we're gonna be, uh, doing our mandatory BLS training, which I think we're gonna do via Zoom, just because we're really tight in our meeting room and. Uh, to get thirty-plus firefighters together, uh, just wanna make it safe, so we're gonna do that via Zoom. Now, the last thing I got is I just had a great idea talking to Lori, and she just left, but we're looking at these, uh, heat pumps. I would love to entertain the idea of getting a heat pump for our center station. And, and maybe that could be something that could be spent with, uh, COVID. Funds, you know, should we, I don't know if there's any money kicking around for that, or is perhaps the grant that we, we just applied for, if money's coming from, for that, maybe that money could be used for something like that. But you can actually get, um, filters for that to, to make the air quality better. I did that at my house. Uh. We just got an old wall-mounted air conditioner, and I think it would be a good use of funds, uh, to make it safer for our environment. Perhaps maybe other town departments too, you know, PD or, uh, public works, you know, if they have a meeting room or, uh, break room or whatever. I think it'd be a good use of funds to do that, so just planting that seed.
The select board is going to have a meeting to discuss what it would like to do with the remaining ARPA funds going forward. That's something that Justin will be arranging in the upcoming months. Air, air systems, air quality systems is certainly something that. Uh, could come out of ARPA funds because it helps to purify the air and make it a safer environment. So definitely.
Meeting room?
This would be just for the meeting room.
Yeah, it couldn't work for the North Wild Station.
They don't really meet up there too much. They, this, the only time they really meet is like truck check nights and. I would be too concerned about that, but definitely for a meeting room, where we got thirty firefighters meeting, uh, it'd be nice to make it comfortable for them. Not, not just the heating system, but certainly during the summer with the AC and, and then have that filter to make the air quality.
What's the, what's the MERV rating on those filters that they put in there?
I don't remember.
Cause it, I mean, I know some better options than just having, I mean, yes, that's an air conditioner, but there's some better options for air. Some far better options.
Yeah. It's been our experience at the Ackley House that when you put heat pumps in and you leave the existing. Uh, heating, oil, heating system, that, uh, the life of the oil heating system has just doubled. Cause you only use it.
Right.
On occasion, you use it when it's ten degrees up.
Good point.
So if you're, you know, if you're looking at the end of life for that heating system, um, this might be one way to sort of kick that can down a little bit.
Okay. But, any questions on, for the fire department? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, chief, I do have one question. Um, I noticed, you know, the spike last year, two thousand twenty, uh, hundred and eight, hundred and ninety-eight calls versus.
One ninety-four.
I'm sorry, one ninety-four, forgive me, um, versus all the others. What, what's your best guess as to what caused this spike?
I, I could tell you, it was probably a false storm where, you know, we had forty-seven calls during that one storm, something like that.
Yeah.
I think there was a couple, a couple of storms, storm-related incidents where we had several calls. Um, we used to like combine those all as one call. Cause we were just out continuously for four hours and we'd get one call, but, um. The national, uh, well, the fire academy, uh, does the stats for, for NFRS National Fire Reporting Incident System. They, they actually wants to break that down to per incident. Which is always challenging when you're on the road and you're calling, 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 especially forty-seven calls.
Sure.
One evening.
Sure. Good to know.
Jump in and just, I want to remind people, Dan, you're so soft-spoken when you're here. You come across so much louder when you're out in your car at a, at a rest stop somewhere. But the speakers are up here in the ceiling, so, and we have people out listening, so don't forget to speak up a little bit.
Oh, you want to go next?
That's fine. To pass out the, the new monthly reports that you'll be getting from this point on. Easier for me to compile them where I'm learning this new system, but, um, you'll see it's broken down, um. Totals at the bottom, you know, self-initiated calls, one hundred and twelve dispatch calls, eighty-nine for total. But this is for the month of November, uh, two hundred and one calls for service. Um, it also breaks down the, uh, average arrival time and average time at the scenes. The call action breakdown at the bottom. Again, it's total for the month of November, two hundred and one, uh, one hundred and twelve self-initiated, eighty-nine dispatch calls. And it just kind of breaks down, uh, the type of calls in the call section and, uh, overall, uh, under call actions. How they were handled. The last one, uh, the case assignment breakdown, and it does give you percentages on, uh. On the type of calls and what they're handling, twenty-two citations, about forty-two and seven percent of it. Of the time, arrests, ten arrests during the month of November. Uh, just kind of gives you a more accurate idea of what's going on out there for law enforcement. And I'd like to reiterate what Dan said, everybody was very appreciative of the, of the, our funds, the, the money coming in just before Christmas. It was a tremendous boost for them and a help for everybody. Well. Any questions on the, on the new format? Any thoughts?
Uh, so usually when, uh, I do the, my selectman notes, uh. Kevin used to have it broken down. At, at the top, he'd have like how many, uh, calls that were received or, uh. And how many, uh. Well, gee, I can't even remember what the words were.
At, at the, um, call reason breakdown at the bottom, you'll see totals, uh. The totals for the, the month of November were two hundred and one calls for service. And dispatch calls, those are calls that were sent to us via, went to dispatch. And the hundred, that was eighty-nine, one hundred and twelve would be the self-initiated calls, be the traffic stops, finding something along the road, you know, uh. That they entered a complaint on.
And then you would have, uh. There were, uh, like how many, uh, wh-what the summons issued were for, like, uh. You know, um.
Oh, you are. Offenses, uh.
Yeah.
Type of offenses, yeah.
Is that there?
It doesn't break down the, the citations, what they were for, um, other than there were ten arrests, twenty-two citations.
Okay.
I. I can, I can break it down further if you would like in the future.
You know, well, I'll just, when I write the selectman, select board reports, I'll just, uh. You know, use this information that you, this is from Monmouth, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
New chief, new, new things.
Yeah. Yeah. I think this is impressive, and the part that I like a lot about this particular report is that it gives a level of detail that we were not aware of before. Including things like how much time it takes you to get to the scene.
Correct.
And, and to see that on average.
And, and some of those, um, you'll see, uh, average arrival time or response times, um, some may be. Skewed just because we got one person on.
Yeah.
And they prioritize if they're on an OUI arrest and someone has a lost and found complaint, then they sit and wait for two, three hours.
Yeah.
So you'll see, uh, you're under a found, lost and found property, two hundred and twenty-seven minutes.
Right.
For an average, but there's a reason behind that. It's not that they just put it off to the side of it because something else prioritized over it, so.
Well, that makes complete sense. If I have questions, when I go to write stuff, I'll just, I'll call you.
You can call.
Okay.
Cause I think I can get, get that information. It's, and, and I've got to tell you, the reason why you can get this earlier is because I'm learning the new computer system. In Monmouth, the IMC, and I find it very difficult just because I've been working with the Spillman system since nineteen eighty-eight. And this new IMC system is like Greek, so I'm learning as I go, so.
So this is different from what Kevin was using?
This is, this is, um, a different format than what Kevin was using, but he used the IMC. I've always used the Spillman. Records management system. When I was at Kenneback and, and in Winthrop, and, um, I find IMC a little more cumbersome just because I'm not used to it. And I'm learning it.
Okay. Why do we use, uh, why are we using IMC instead of?
It was a, I, I can't answer that. It's the choice that Kevin made at the time to, for the record management system, and it was probably cheaper at the time, so. That's probably why he, he went to it.
And it seems to me like those are the two common brands, right?
Yeah. Correct.
I've heard that, uh, that, that Winthrop is switching to a digital.
Correct. Talk to Chief Frost about that. Um. They're working, they're still, um, working with, with grants, putting grants in place, trying to get the dispatch center up and running. He doesn't know whether it's a year out or two years out, but they are going digital.
Oh, and, and so Monmouth will have to change also?
Yes. Um, the problem with, with all the outlying agencies are all, have all gone digital. And. We cannot hear or communicate with other agencies that are digital because we're still in awe. And which presents a problem in the cruisers because we have, uh, four vehicles, only one of them has a digital radio in it. And I talked to Winthrop about, about this la, uh, yesterday, the day before, uh, my cruiser only has two frequencies in it. Monmouth and Leeds Fire, and, and it really handicaps my ability to go and do my job because I don't know what's going on around me. I can't even hear what's in my cruiser. You know, so that's something that I need to, need to update ra- rather quickly in order to be more efficient with my job, more effective. It's a.
So we're taking care of, uh, making sure that Paul gets his car outfitted properly to what he needs. The select board will be hearing more as you get into the budget process about, uh, the need to, uh, move over to a new digital system. But we have discussed that and it's, you will be hearing more about it.
And so fire, we're doing it as well, and, and of public works?
Yeah, I mean, we, we have analog, so if they go digital, that's a discussion we need to have. And, cause then we're not gonna be able to communicate, you know, back and forth, uh, which could become an issue. Uh, we have three times the radios that they do, so now we're talking big dollars, you know, to switch over fire. And we only have four apparatus, but we've got two mobile stations in both stations, and then we've got, um, I don't know how many portable radios between our, our dozen officers and. And all the portables that are on the trucks, uh, for all the jump, you know, for all the seats, and, and then we've got the repeater, you know, which is another issue. That's gonna have to be upgraded to be able to receive digital. And by going digital, just, just so you know, everybody on scanner land, unless you have specific, you know, scanner that can receive digital, which most don't. You know, people won't be able to, to listen to our calls, which may not be a bad thing.
You can get digital scanners.
You can, you can, they're just more expensive.
More expensive?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so there's a lot of money involved here?
One, I, I just priced out, when I talked to a friend of mine who works for Motorola, he had provided Winthrop with a quo, quo on, uh. The Apex sixty-five hundred digital P twenty-five compliant radios. Uh, back in May, they were thirty-four hundred and change per unit. I contacted his, um, sales rep for a quote, and they've gone up, they're up to forty-three hundred dollars even now.
As the mobile radio for your cruiser.
Yes.
The portable's will probably be like half that.
Correct.
Yeah.
Depending on the, on the type you get. Now, I, I went on to the Lexapro website. They, they organize, um, all the, the grants for government agencies for this sort of thing. And so what I need to do, I, I sent them an email, they send me back passwords on, I'm in on their site, and they're sending me all of the grant. Opportunities that are out there right now. I need to sit down with, with, with chief and figure out. Number of radios, portables, and include it all in one and, and see what's out there on, you know, for, for grants that are available.
Cause then you'll want to include the town trucks, cause if it's a storm and there's accidents and things need to be.
And that brings up all other issue about being on one frequency, you know, and wanna, uh, so we're coming up on a renewal, by the way. Two thousand twenty-two is when we need to renew our frequency for the town. Uh, that's usually good for ten or fifteen years.
I think it's ten.
Ten, ten years, so every ten years you're gonna renew that, so.
I thought that, uh, that there had been a switch that, that Monmouth and Winthrop PDs were both on a, a, a Winthrop frequency.
No.
No.
We had talked about that, um, and we had, this is about two years, two to three years ago, we had talked about doing that, and, uh. Kevin went around and did portable tests and radio tests in different parks of the community. Problematic areas, one twenty-six down by Tacoma, just can't get over the, get over the mountain to reach them, um. So in order to, to alleviate some of those problems, he had the repeaters, the, put in the cars, so you can repeat from the portable. And boost it up over the car radio and sends it out.
Yeah.
So there were some issues as far as coverage in doing that. Um, since Winthrop has moved their antenna a little bit higher, um, we need to go down and revisit that again around town.
What about mutually departments for us?
Can I just, can I just jump in, so, cause we're getting away off here into a discussion that probably needs to come back before the select board. Either during the budget process or maybe even set up a work session to get more information about this. Does that make sense? And then they'll, they'll have a chance to gather more information and bring it to you.
Yeah.
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 Good.
That's important steps, so.
Chief, I, I, thank you very much for this report. There's a lot of detail here. Thank you. Uh, Jeff, were you in a report, Dennis, or anything?
No, I was just, I'm here for the later agenda. I. Good evenings. Uh, public works, uh, December's been an interesting month for us. This week was the first week I've been pulling staff since Thanksgiving, uh, the COVID issues. Thankfully, I have a available part-timers that have, have experienced it, able to fill in a lot of hours this month. The stormly that have been, uh, light and accumulation, but they require just as many man-hours and material to take care of. Um, as a bigger storm, so it's, it's a little frustrating to, to work fourteen, sixteen hours and see two inches of snow and feel like you really haven't accomplished anything. But, uh, we've managed to, um, equipment-wise, we've been, uh, struck in with unfortunate breakdowns that we can't trace to any. Real issues, lack of maintenance or anything like that, we just had bad luck with some, some vehicles, so we've been, besides being down employees, we've got a couple storms down, a truck or two. And, uh, so right now, everything is back up to par, um, employee-wise and equipment-wise, and we're hoping that, uh, the month of December, uh, the way it's treated us will, will. Be in the rearview mirror. Transfer station wise, the initiation of, uh, advertising that we'd be checking permits more closely for the month of December. Was very interesting, the, the, the very first weekend that, that was initiated, uh, the volume. Of people to the transfer station and the volume of materials brought to the transfer station dropped considerably. I really think it was just timing, that, you know, the cold weather hit, the, the December, and people stopped cleaning up. Permit checks have been very successful, the public has been very understanding. We've had, found very few actual, um, people that shouldn't be in there. And when I say very few, I'm gonna say probably a half dozen people that we were politely told that they really should not be using our facility. And the volume has stayed down all month, um, with the exception of the holiday here, Christmas, this week, the, the trash and recycle, uh, spend, um. Bumped up tremendously, but this to be expected, but all other, um, areas of the transfer station that collect have, have been way down, so. I'd like to think that throwing out the permit text thing, um, corrected the issue, but I, I. In realistic terms, I think it was just timing, it'd be interesting to see what happens going forward, but right now, the amount of, um. Trailers and compactors and, and bins I'm having to have hauled out has dropped tremendously, which puts me, uh, at ease right now, just hopefully closer to within budget. Compared to the pace I was on before December, uh, only backed out, so. And to echo what the other two chiefs said, uh, my employees were extremely, um. Excited and, um, a lot of gratitude for the ARPA funds, um, from the transfer station and for public works department. They were very, very, uh, surprised and, uh, and very, uh, felt very good about that. They, they felt really appreciated, I guess, either word used, they, they, they were very thankful for that. Um, and not to digress back into the radio topic very much, but, uh, Chief Rowan reeked conversationally about radios and. Uh, look forward to coordinating with those two going forward, uh, on the process and. We can obviously give much more details about that, uh, when the time is right.
I would just like a reminder, like in a month's time, for us to come back to the transfer station question after, you know, we, we look at a snapshot a couple of months beyond when we sent out that notice. Cause, um, our, actually, our timing was actually pretty good. I, I, uh, I understand that the town of Sabatus. Had to close their transfer station because of, uh, COVID issues and, and no backup. So, um, so we're fortunate on many different fronts with that regard.
Yes, there was, there was, uh, many days that I had to run the transfer station with two people, uh, as I took the third member. Put between public works and transfer, uh, he just, I had to have it in a, in a truck even when the transfer station was open. But it's, well, and, uh, the manager of the transfer station did report that they received many, many calls from Sabatus residents, wondering if they could bring their. Uh, items to us because of that closure. The answer was obvious unfortunately, but yes, that, that definitely. Place is draining, we were lucky that we didn't have issues on that end of the town, uh, you know, with those employees.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, uh, select board reports.
You want a manager's report, are you? Actually, I don't have a report tonight, I just wanted to say some thank yous. While I, while I have, uh, the opportunity, I want to thank the select board members who have been really supportive of me throughout the last, uh, two-plus years. Uh, much appreciated. It hasn't always been an easy time, uh, as you all know, but, uh, you. Most of you have been very, very supportive and I really appreciate it, uh, to the employees of this town. Uh, those of you who come to work every day, love what you do, uh, you serve the public, you don't complain about it, you just go about doing your job. Uh, and you've been very supportive of me. I totally appreciate that. And, uh, I want to send out a special thank you. I'm glad that there were a couple of election folks here earlier. Uh, this town is blessed with a fantastic election team in the polling place, and, um, I know they'll continue to do a good job under Rich Howard going forward, so no worries there. And to the people of Monmouth who have been very, very supportive of me, who've reached out, uh, to say goodbye, who've reached out over the last couple of years to just. Say that they've appreciated the changes that have been made, uh, they understand the change is hard sometimes, but it has to be done. Uh, I just want to say thank you. There's some really good people in this town. It's a beautiful community. And I want to wish Justin the best of luck going forward. I think he's gonna do a fantastic job. And lastly, just wish everyone a happy and healthy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, select board reports.
I had, well, I, I had a fair request, uh, that for us to think about is, uh. From Julie at the library, that, uh, currently whales, I know we're gonna think about increasing whales per capita. Uh, amount to. The, for the use of the transfer station, but also she was wondering about, uh, sharing the library with people from whales. So they wouldn't have to pay, they currently pay, like any outsider who comes and uses Monmouth's library, they pay ten dollars, uh, a year. And she was just wondering if that, uh, cost for, um, whales people could be eliminated. Maybe it could go along with our increase in, uh. Transfer station fee or something.
Maybe we could find out how many people from whales use the library.
Yeah, I guess she could tell us, yeah, maybe.
Justin can reach out to Julie once he comes on board and have that conversation with her, get more information.
And the other thing that we do every year is the Spirit of America. And the other thing that we do every year is the spirit of America award. And, uh. We have to think of somebody or a group that would, uh, be deserving of it. Uh, you know what, you know what it is.
Sure, I read it at some point. I don't remember anymore.
For everyone's benefit, why don't you tell us what it is?
Oh, it, it's, uh, for an organization that, uh, does a lot for the community. Uh, last year, I think it was the Machuana, uh, food. That they supplied. Yeah, food for the kids all summer long. A, a, a crew over at the camp and they would bring the food to, I think it was Winthrop and here they had a. Uh, Norm Tombs did it. He was down here at the, uh. Town office parking lot. And we've given it to the vestry for what they do for Kathy, uh, Perlis. Uh, we've given it to the backpack program, um, for what they do all, all winter long. Uh, all school year long, uh, supplying, uh. Food for kids on weekends. That sort of thing. Yes.
How about the control Taylor and Christmas basket committee?
Yeah, we, I think we've done.
Done it in the past.
Yeah, and, and I think did, uh. I don't know that we did it, somebody did, uh. Somebody in the fire department. Michelle, Michelle Handler, yes.
Doug, do you have the email that we received, uh, that describes what the award is? Do you think maybe you could forward that to Justin and he could get that out to everyone and. And then select board members could be thinking about likely recipients?
Cause you've got, oh, it says near Doug and, and other Monmouth officials, but, but you don't get these.
I, I don't remember seeing that. Do you remember reading that?
No, okay. So I should forward it to.
Yeah, to Justin. Or if I find it in my email, I can do it. I'll send it to you over the weekend.
And if you send me a copy, I'd like to.
Yeah, I'll send it to all the slide board.
Yeah, come up with some.
So, uh, then, uh. Public comment. Any public, uh. Out there would like to say something? Uh, next is an abatement and supplemental bill for map twenty six lot twenty one.
In your packet, uh, you have a brief description from Donna Hayes. Uh, that a mistake was made when a piece of property was split this past year and it was inadvertently, um. Put into the wrong name. So what she's asking you to do is, um. Correct the two, do two abatements and then do two supplemental bills. One is nineteen eighty seven sixteen and the other one is eleven forty eight sixty eight. And all this is going to do, it's a wash. It's not money going out. It's just going to put the property into the proper owner's names and assign the bills to the proper owner.
And, uh, for Nancy Smith's kids, she lived down here on, you know, and Danny.
Danny and.
And Harold, yes.
I make a motion that, uh, we approve the abatement and supplemental bill for map twenty six lot twenty one.
I'll second that.
So there's a motion by Ken, second by Chris to approve the abatement and supplemental bill for the. Map twenty six lot twenty one. All those in favor? Thank you. Next is to appoint Justin Poirier as Monmouth's representative to the main waste to energy board.
Thank you. As you know, I have been sitting on this board since I came, uh, two years ago. And traditionally, I guess it has been the town manager who has, um, represented Monmouth on the main waste to energy board. I have, um, talked to Justin. He's willing to carry on that tradition. And so I'm asking you this evening to replace me with Justin on the main waste to energy board. And then, uh, Justin can just get in touch with main waste to energy. They're expecting this, that this is on the agenda this evening. They don't meet that often.
No, fortunately. And they brought in his food. I know the reason.
I was on the eco main board before. We got all kinds of swag there. Jackets and sweatshirts and all.
Not just.
Not just food, no, we used to get all.
Food, but not just trash or recycling, crushed milk jugs or things.
That's pretty good, cause I'm going on the.
I make a motion, we appoint Justin, uh, Poirier as Monmouth's representative to the main waste to energy board.
I'll second that.
So the motion by Ken, second by Chris to appoint Mr. Poirier. As the representative for Monmouth for the main waste to energy board. All those in favor? Thank you. Uh, next is a work session. Which involves catered beer and wine at Cumston Hall event.
So at the last, uh, select board meeting, I mentioned to the select board that Dennis Price had asked. If we would discuss possibility of having, uh, functions at Cumston Hall that would be catered by off premise caterers. Uh, these are people that are licensed by the state who can go off premises. They may own a restaurant and have a liquor license there. Or they may just be caterers with liquor licenses to go off premises and provide events. Dennis is here this evening to elaborate on that, uh, to let you know what he's thinking and I will turn it over to Dennis.
Hi there. Uh, hello, uh, I, thank you for having me on the agenda. Um, I've been involved with Cumston Hall since nineteen ninety eight. Um, and in that time, being involved with the theater of Monmouth and other things, um, it's been a, a pretty amazing experience to have that. Uh, you know, venue to present performing arts, um, things. Uh, but in that time, it's always been, uh, interesting to me that there was never, it wasn't a condoned beer and wine service there. You couldn't go to a play and have a, a drink. Um, and, uh, one of the things that I, as in my new position. Uh, when I took over was trying to find ways to sort of bring more, not necessarily revenue streams, but how to invigorate the economic possibilities. At Cumston Hall. Again, I would state for the record that I don't believe that Cumston Hall will ever make money. But I think that the, the rate at which it, uh, sort of sees that return, you know, can, can be adjusted. Uh, I should say. So with the idea of offering this value added service, which I think would allow a, a new. Um, sort of a crop of events to come in and sort of bring folks to, uh, Cumston Hall and downtown. Uh, that this would be a really, a really good possibility and an opportunity for the town, for Cumston Hall. Uh, and for people to see that. Um, and, and if you have any questions, I, I'd love to talk to you about it and, and just sort of hash it out tonight and.
I do.
Yes, sir.
Cause the police chief is sitting over.
Right over there, yes.
The word condone.
Yes, yes.
Tell me more.
Well, uh, in the past, there, like I've found with a lot of things involved with Cumston Hall, there is what I would call legend. Uh, and not necessarily policy. Um, so what, what I've discovered is. It would be naive to think that there is no alcohol consumed on the property of Cumston Hall. But the, the way that that exists now is. For lack of better words, brown bagging it out in the parking lot or tailgating out in your Subaru while you're waiting for the show to start. I think if we offer, my, my, my thought would be that if we offer the on premises service. Then what I would hope is that we could see either A, that situation sort of. Move to where the service was being held and, and, and that was a, an option. Um, and it also, I think is a better look, just in general. You know what I mean? Um, and so what I'm, what I'm looking for is, you know, it, it gives us a measure of control. Over what happens, um, without prohibiting the act.
Yeah, I, I definitely think it elevates the offerings there because. Number one, with all my walking in town, I've seen numerous occasions of people drinking in the cemetery with. You know, little tables and chairs and sitting amongst the headstones and, and once the chain was put up. Some of people have stopped stepping over it and, you know, set up outside and I've witnessed that numerous times.
Yeah.
Setting up it and tailgating in the parking lot. So why not? Have them pay for it and we could at least maybe make a little something.
Right.
And it elevates it. I mean, I, I, I think about when I went to the Wang and saw a show at the fifth Wang. It was fun. You went in early, you had a glass of champagne and it set the tone for what you were about to be a part of. And then, you know, you can go to the civic center in Portland and some concerts you're actually able to drink at.
Yeah.
You know, and some obviously not.
Right. And, and that's the thing that I hope, uh, you know, you and, and anyone who is listening to this at home and, and knows. I, I think Cumston Hall is, I, I cherish it. I love it. Um, and, and I don't want there to be any misconception. We are not going to, uh, you know, allow someone to bring a sixer while they bring their kids to the library. You know, I mean, we're not looking. We're not looking for it. What we're talking about is opening up, uh, you know, some, some, just the idea of. You know, a value added service. It is just simply another way for Cumston Hall to attract people. Um, that, that come to see these events.
Yeah.
Um, and, and I, I have spoken with folks. Uh, there is a group in Auburn called the River Comics. They do shows all over. Uh, but one of the, one of the things that they mentioned that they, they had a, it wasn't necessarily conducive to their. Uh, booking was because there were, there were no beer or wine sales. It was no, you know, like a two drink minimum or whatever. Um, they, they, that was a thing for them and they mentioned that to me as well. Um, but it also could possibly be that, that it's not just events in the opera hall. It could be that there were, you know, uh, you know, with, uh, thinking of other businesses in town, there could be, uh, a beer tasting. Uh, that we could have at Cumston Hall along with, you know, books, um, and, and things like that. There could be, uh, a, a sort of, uh, classes. About, you know, how to make beer and things like that, as long as it was allowed and operated on the space by the, the vendors. So, uh, what I mentioned in my letter and just so it's public record, there would be no storage of alcohol at Cumston Hall. No agent, myself, I guess included, or whoever the caretaker would be, would not be responsible for purchasing or purvey, uh, getting any alcohol. Um, and, you know, ultimately it would be just like any other vendored service, uh, with, um, having insurance. Uh, and those sorts of things. I have spoken to some folks at, at, in Gray New Gloucester. Her name is Christina Caswell. She runs an organization called the Bar Association. Very funny, uh, but it's, uh, travelated. They do just this. And I asked her about policies for this sort of town and this sort of situation and, um, she sent me some language, uh, that I thought was pretty good. Uh, you know, it would have to be like a, a first reading or something like that. Once we turn it into a policy for Cumston. The trustees would be involved in as well, but I just, I, I think that. You know, the idea is that it does bring a level of sophistication. There is some, some activities of value added service and, and that's really what we want. Um, and we trust the professionals to know.
I, I vaguely remember back in the early days when it started with Dixiel and, and Bob Joyce. That, uh, opening nights would be a special occasion. I think after the performance, there would be tables set up. Like by the archway.
That is correct.
Uh, and maybe with, uh, David Greenham, there was. There were, there were goodies there.
Yes, like, like glasses of wine you speak of. Is that what you're talking about? Absolutely. Uh, there was a gray area, uh, for a while, and I think the gray area was this. As long as we are giving away the alcohol and not charging for it, then we'll be okay. I, I don't feel comfortable that way either, um, to be honest with you. I would much rather have it be a, a contracted service. So under my proposal and hope, that would not, that would still would not be allowed. Um, they would have to hire a vendor to serve their opening nights, um, and do it that way. What we would do as the town would simply be to connect. If you're coming in to do an event, if you're looking for, you know, alcohol vendors, these are the folks that we've worked for. These are the folks we have recommendations for. These are vendors if they have to register with the town. Uh, I don't know if that's something they have to do, but still, uh, it'd be like that.
They wouldn't have to register with the town, but I think it's important for the select board to know. That you would be approving each one of these events each time they happen because you need to sign off on the permit. For the off premise caterer.
Right.
And so Dennis would have to get that in the packet the week before the event or sooner if, you know, I'm assuming.
We would know far enough in advance if we were booking an, an event like this, that, that the timeline would not be a problem. And, and that's a good thing, Linda, if, if I could just piggyback on that. There would still be approval coming by through the select board. That still has to happen. What I'm looking for is just the, the sort of first gate to open so that they can make their way to you.
And the PD wouldn't have to be involved in approval.
Uh, not, not that I know of. There's no aspect of that application, um.
He would not be, or they would not be.
Uh, liability insurance, things like that. This woman in Gray New Gloucester has two million dollars liability insurance. And something that she mentioned to me that, that was sort of helpful in moving forward, if, if that's the decision. Uh, is, is with companies to know the difference between an independent contractor and an employee. So if I, if Doug runs the business and Cat Chris is the independent contractor, she is not necessarily covered by his insurance. So she would need to be a proper employee in order for that sort of thing. That's how I understood. Um, so those sorts of little in and out details are good to find out about this.
I think it's the smart next step because, you know, I've always been. You know, wearing my hat as a trustee of the hall, wanted the hall to, you know, grow. I mean, we all love the hall. We want it to be the hall forever, but we, we also know it has to grow. And it also has to try to cover its nut. I mean, it's a big nut to cover.
Exactly.
It may never cover its nut, but at least it's something.
Like we said, the rate at which it, it loses that is, is I could, I think can be slowed. And I, I think that again, just a, 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 an extra value added service that, that comes through at Cumston. It is the way I look at it. It's easy.
I think it's a, I think it's the, the smart next step to.
It seems to me that from an economic development standpoint, that, you know, Cumston Hall is the crown jewel of Monmouth. And, uh, and the way things are going now, at least for. Ninety-five percent of the year, the sidewalks roll up at five o'clock.
Yeah.
Um, I think we've got an obligation. I mean, I, I know everyone is thinking. Very hard about what we can do to become attractive to a, you know, substantial restaurant. Sit down restaurant. That would be a nice match for Cumston Hall and a bunch of other businesses around town. Um, so these small little changes that, uh, like the one you're suggesting tonight to me. Makes sense in terms of. Easy stuff that we can do that will have, you know, an, an incremental impact.
Right.
Um, and hopefully we'll, uh, get to where we want to go with finding a restaurant at some point in the near future.
Well, and, you know, doing this with Cumston, I think that as being part of the academy rebuilding committee. It's something that we're going to have to broach with that topic too, because we want that venue to be able to be open for weddings and receptions and. Reunions and all of those things. So we're going to be facing this question with the academy. Once we get it to the point that it's ready to, to, to rent and use in that way. And, you know, so I think that it, it will all work together.
Yes. Well, that's, that would be my hope. And, and if I continue on and, and have that opportunity, it would be nice to, to find ways that.
Oh, yeah. I think that, I think.
You'll be overseeing the, the building over here.
Oh, my heavens. I guess so. I don't know. That's right. That's right. I'll get a badge.
So my recommendation, if this, if the three of you are good with moving forward on this, is that Dennis put together a policy. Uh, and I know that he's been working on one so far and get the approval of the trustees of Cumston Hall. And then also, excuse me, bring that to the select board for final approval. But then, understanding that you will be granting each event a liquor license.
Yes, and it gets marvelous.
Am I good?
Definitely.
Good, okay.
Leave that in your hand.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you for everything.
Absolutely.
Next is warrant number thirteen.
Thank you. And the warrant is down that way when you're so inclined. Thank you, and the warrant is down that way, when you're so inclined. Checks over a thousand dollars, Andersborgen Bank, uh, this is our principal reduction payment on the Wilson Fund Culver贷款. Two hundred thirty-two thousand fifty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Uh, we will be getting a new amortization schedule for that and substantially reducing the debt service and debt retirement payment in the next. And ongoing budgets until we exhaust that bill. This is a good thing, ninety-five thousand dollars of that was a grant from the DEP and the rest of it was made up from the savings from the project. Bernstein Scher Sawyer Nelson, our monthly retainer fee, one thousand forty-one dollars sixty-six cents. Blue Rock Earthworks for solid waste trips, one thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars sixty-six cents. Central Main Power Company for electricity for multiple buildings, three thousand one hundred seventeen dollars seventy cents. Civis Corporation uh for Cyrus Spreader Control, hopefully I pronounced that right, one thousand nine dollars forty-six cents. Dennis K Burke for diesel and unmet gasoline, six thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars seventy-seven cents. Fieldings Oil and Propane Company for heating oil, two thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars forty-seven cents. Fornia's Tree Service for the Maple Street Tree Removal, fifteen thousand dollars. That's uh coming out of our TIF fund, which the uh select board authorized me to use. Grimmel Industries for bulk waste and demo removal, three thousand seven hundred forty-four dollars eighty-six cents. Justin Poirier for uh manager training, one thousand seventy-six dollars forty-six cents. The select board will remember that you wanted Justin to spend some time with me in the office and he did that for a couple of weeks. Uh, this is paying him for that time. Main Ways to Energy for recycling, two thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars eighty cents. Monmouth Water Association for our water bills, one thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars two cents. New England Salt Company for salt, seven thousand two hundred ninety dollars ninety-nine cents. And Treasurer State of Maine for taxes, titles and fees, plates for motor vehicles, four thousand nine hundred twenty-eight dollars and one thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars fifty cents.
I make a motion, we approve warrant number thirteen.
I'll second.
Motion by Ken, second by Chris, to approve warrant number thirteen, all those in favor? Thank you. Hey, are this matching feelings, does Fieldings know now that Cumston has. Fuel tanks that they need to fill?
Yes, uh, that has been fixed, uh, if I could just run over real quick. Turns out, since the 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 transition from Fabian to Fieldings has been just unusual, is all I can say. At one point, we were getting deliveries from both of them. Uh, so Fabian would come one day and Fieldings would come the next day and it and I was just like, this is unusual, is all I can say. Uh, but when I called them, they were, uh, to their credit, they were filling up. The only one of the three spouts uh at Cumston. Um, they were also getting confused about which spout was which number with the annex, which is next door. So I have clarified it crystal clear with our friends at Fieldings, with the driver who radioed in and made sure they knew. I have called them beforehand and followed up with them. And so they they knew that they were, we're on auto, so they knew when they let it out, they were like, that's our fault. And they came, they were there in an, within an hour, so it was, it was, they took care of the business that they were expected to.
Did you go out there with your label maker?
Oh, my lord, well, yes, exactly, I was like, is it a tag on this one, is it a tag on this one? But I I did say, do I need to make a sign, do I need to, and he was like, no, now that we have it. So I can only go off what what they had to say. But it was, it was valuable to them because they uh gave us uh one thousand eight gallons. So.
Were you?
Well, they provided for us, Doug, they they'd invoice us very soon, I have a feeling. That's, that's it, thank you.
Another, another question.
Sure.
While you're here.
I'm here.
There are safes in the cellar of the annex.
Yes, the other thing, yes, so uh, there are. Uh, and and I, again, you know, I, the annex is part of Cumston Hall, so I, every Monday I do a check-through. And I always make sure that 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 area is dry and and I check on the the boiler and things like that. But over the years, again, since nineteen ninety-eight, uh, those, uh, there is a safe, a large record safe. Uh, and I started going through it this week, uh, because part of my winter sort of thing is to do that. There are birth records, marriage records, and death certificates from the early forties to the late fifties, they're in there. Bills of sale, uh, tax records, a lot of voting things, absentee ballots. And the most interesting thing is a uh magnetic tape, a reel-to-reel of town meeting from, I believe, nineteen sixty-one. Which would be totally cool, but I just, but you know, the thing is, it's like, I I think those things should get out of there. But also in in, to be honest with you, the theater of Monmouth rents that space, they use that stuff. And so I've said, you know, is, could, we could get this out of your way, you know, I mean, it just sort of, I bet it belongs somewhere else. Uh, so that's, that's that one safe, and then there's a smaller safe that is, that cannot, I can't open, I don't know how to do it, I don't know if there's a key. Um, but it's also, it's a smaller safe, I believe it has the Cumston millions.
I've been trying, my grandmother still hasn't messaged me with how to get into that.
There's a very tight, it's down there, uh, but those are, those are things that are down there, I found my mother-in-law's birth certificate.
So, so, so. Birth, marriage, and death records are confidential.
Yes.
We don't know who your mother-in-law is.
So we are arranging for Laura, we need a uh town staff person to go down and go through these vaults. Because obviously, we have confidential records down there that we can't have anyone else going through. I did not know these records were down there until Dennis brought them to our attention. Lori is on it, she's going to arrange with Dennis to go down and go through all the records and we will take care of them. Some of them might be records that we can give to the museum. But we won't know until we go through them, birth, marriages, and deaths need to come up and be in the clerk's vault.
I thought, don't we, every year in the, in the town report, we put people who died and people who were born?
Yes, but the record itself is confidential, so the actual copy.
Who the mother, who the father.
On the record are allowed to see.
She already wants to talk.
So we're on it.
Um, and I, yes, I'll speak to her about that, I I I can get all of those, there's, it's not, it's not too, too many. So my, my thought is, I'm just gonna bring a tub over and that way we can look at it, constant and things like that, cause it's dank in that place.
And the thing with the oil, so we've joined a consortium last year so that we could get our gasoline and our heating fuel. Cheaper. And I think what happened last year was it ended up being the same company from the year before, so there was no confusion. This year it actually changed, the Fieldings came in as the low bidder. I assumed that our uh partners over at Main Power Options were going to notify all of those people, because I think that's how it works. This is, uh, and we sign paperwork with the different oil companies, but apparently there was some kind of a communication snafu there, so. Uh, we, we hopefully we had that all cleaned up too.
As far as I understand, and I've been monitoring everything and.
Do we, do we have a locksmith who can get into the 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 Monmouth bullion?
It's gonna be like when they.
We'll look into that, I don't have any skills that way, so.
Open the vault.
That's right, yes, like Geraldo Rivera.
Yes, there was nothing.
There was nothing in there.
I'll leave that with Justin, need to figure out how to get into that hall.
Yeah, my grandmother hasn't answered me, which is a good thing, probably, she doesn't answer me.
Are we getting busy up there?
She's dizzy, she's my daughter and grandfather-in-law, yes.
Do you wanna adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
All right, I'll tell you what, that's right at seven.
I know, we've done fast.